There is any, it's not gonna be able to make it, so we'll get her whatever information she needs. Steve is here because we wanted to talk about the brush and I had brought this up at our last meeting. I think the council meeting, I handed out some pictures of what we've had to deal with as far as the mass amounts and the problems we're having with possibly contractors doing the cutting and putting it out to the road. We had another one yesterday, what is that, 8th Avenue?
Yeah, I have an example here of a Ford passed since Wednesday last week. What has happened is the county started a few months ago charging everyone, contractor residents, everyone, it's gotten much worse since then. Contractors know that we won't pick up after them, they're coming in on weekends, they're coming in in the evening if we're not here. You're getting every kind of story in the world from the residents, you know, it's my brother, it was so-and-so, just giving you a few examples, last Wednesday on Hackberry Drive. Remember, Beth saw this herself, get a call, this gentleman dragging out brush with his trailer, or dumping it with the trailer where it came from. I went out there, it was the gentleman that owned the house. "I cut this myself, putting it out here, y'all pick up." Well, it wasn't cutting any kind of length, it was just a terrible mess. It took half a day, backhoe, truck, three men. Get it all up and the neighbor comes over, "Why'd y'all do that?" Contractor cut that. Woodcrest Drive, Friday, get a call, woman, man, contractor's out there cutting whole bushes around the house, starting to cut the trees, of course they never stop, tell them, "We're not gonna pick this up after you," for a contractor. Don't speak English, don't speak English, don't know, boss not here, don't speak English. Go up, knock on the door, tell the resident, they immediately just go into panic, grab their hearts, start crying. Of course, never found the boss. It's still hanging up there. 8th Avenue Southeast, yesterday, a gentleman showed up in my office at eight o'clock. "Oh, we got quite a bit of brush on 8th Avenue Southeast. Nephews and nieces came in this weekend, cut it, out it out, lady died." Well, here's a picture of it. It's about sixty foot long, too deep. I go out there and start taking pictures. Of course, they don't stack it on their property, they stack it on the neighbor's property and the neighbor parking lot. So, we go over to talk to the neighbor, say, "You know, we've got a problem, we can't go on your private property to get this." Well, we were wondering why that contractor cut it right over here and stacked it on our properties. So, you know, what we're asking for is some limits to what can be put out there and how it needs to be cut up. We're spending a lot of time, a lot of manpower, and it's not fair to the other residents, we can't get to them in a time of that. I don't know if you all saw, I hope you did, did you have in the package what we typed up?
They got it at the council meeting.
What I typed up, huh?
No, no.
Oof, I know, now I have more copies. Yes, you were, we passed it out. We're just asking for two reasons, one being, again, so we can get that one in time. The second one being, if you all know, the Staple 50 connector has started. We had five and a half acres out there for storage. We sold to state, two-thirds of that, we're down to about below an acre for storage. Now, I'll be bringing you proposals, we budgeted thirty thousand dollars this year, because now we're gonna have to pay to get rid of what's there. That's a guess, the thirty thousand dollars. Right now, we're the only municipality not charging. I would like to keep it that way. I'm gonna be bringing you probably three different scenarios, what we can do. There's a gentleman that has a contract with inner local waste management, and he comes on site, he grinds it, you pay him so much time to take it away. He has put in a proposal that he buys land, we take it to him, we pay a lease per year for him, for that land to him, he just processes it on site. And the third one would be, he buys some properties somewhere. But we wanna wait till spring, get through this leaf season, to see how much we can get on the property we have. That's why I haven't signed any kind of contracts or made any kind of proposals yet. We're gonna try to get through this season and see if that acre and a half will hold what we have and we can get in there and process it. That would probably be the cheapest, but if you look at thirty thousand more a year, this ain't gonna take too long, we bought a piece of property. TDEC has changed quite a few of the regulations, burning is out of the question. So, if this stuff is not cut up in certain lengths where we can chip it, then we're gonna end up processing it anyway, if we take it. That's what we're getting nutshell right now, so we get those three proposals together. So, we're just looking at guidelines, when you read, we'll pass this round. Except I have one, oh yeah, I have one.
And what's in the memo is what Steve suggested as some of the limits that would still allow quite a bit. And there would be times when a resident might possibly do it themselves and have more than that, if they, you know, during a storm or something, but if they could do it in increments of this amount.
Now, storm damage will be a different, you know, that will be different. When there's a storm that comes through, we have an ice storm up ahead a couple of times since I've been here. If it's bad enough, you can get reimbursement from FEMA for a lot of your overtime, for a lot of your costs. So, something like, you know, a storm event is different. But we're just talking about general maintenance is what this program was supposed to be, it's supposed to be for residents, they're just trimming, you know, general maintenance, not for chopping out multiple trees or cutting multiple trees or cutting complete trees, that's not what this was meant to be.
So, how does everyone kind of feel about those limits? If you have other suggestions, what I wanted to do, because Steve and I have discussed it and I think they're reasonable, and I would need to bring it to the council in a meeting for y'all to approve. And then, we would like to possibly make it go into effect possibly January, I mean, not immediately, we would need to notify the public. And we have found that Facebook is our best way of getting the word out, we could do radio, we could do newspaper, but I asked Roger if it was possible for the city to pay. I know on your utility bills, they can put one little line on there, but they normally do not stuff an extra piece of paper, there would probably be a cost for that. Did you have an opportunity to see what that would cost us?
I have asked, I haven't got it back yet, because we had to go through and limit out, you don't even wanna send it to the residents and the city limits. And a lot of ours are outside of that, so we scale way back the number of routes that it would be on, so I should get that the next day or so, it's not that expensive.
That would be the only way you would be a hundred percent sure that every resident had received some type of notification, because every resident would have a letter.
The only thing that might not cover, but I think the word would get out, there are a lot of rentals and the people that own the rentals do not live in the city limits. I mean, so the renter would get the notice if he gets the bill unless the person that's renting the house gets the bill. But I think if everyone gets it enough, then the word's gonna get out. That's what we're doing.
Mr. Wolf, have a question.
Yeah, thank you, I would like to add that there's one more media you didn't mention, that we have television now on the Franklin County Buzz, and we would be very happy to work with Mr. Goodman and the city in making this information known to the general public. We've got about sixteen thousand people trailing us on Facebook and other places, so we have a pretty good audience.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
I've got a couple of things. I would suggest that we prepare a pretty definitive letter to all of those that are known to commercial, all of those that are known to cut commercially, and let them know their responsibility if they take, if they take the, if they come in and they cut it, their responsible, their responsibility for.
And I meant to bring that up myself, in fact. The problem is of the Woodies, the Fennies, the people like that, they know, we don't have a problem with them. The people here, every one of them, unmarked truck, guarantee you they do not have a city license, guarantee you they do not have insurance.
Well, I believe that there are some commercial people that have bucket trucks that are cutting that are leaving it at the owner's request, I'm sure. So, we need to let as many of those people know. And then, also, as many employees that we have out and about on the streets of Winchester. I mean, it wouldn't take just a few minutes, two minutes probably, if they see something like that going on, stop.
My men have all been, they do.
And talk to that resident about this.
Every one of these were from the employee, you know, that originally stopped, called me, had already talked to the contractor, which nine times out of ten gets escalated, you know, I mean, and then I have to show up and, you know, every one of them know if they see someone out there, and you know, like the one, on one of them, well, they're just doing this for lunch, we're paying, we're giving them lunch. They got buried equipment that I got, I mean, they're sending them six hundred dollar chainsaws and, you know, so they're not giving it for lunch, you know.
Well, I mean, I, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a problem, and we need to address it and...
But I think if the resident knows, and we put it out there, and tell them, you let your lawn service know, you let whoever you have, because most of these people go neighborhood and neighborhood and, you know, if it lays there for a while, or they have to pay to get it picked up, and you've got to make a point somewhere, I think.
But finding the right way to get it in front of every single property owner or resident.
Because that's what we're gonna hear, they're gonna say, "Well, we didn't know."
Well, if we implement some new guidelines like that, we could extend that window before it actually went into effect a few months ahead, you know.
Yeah, I mean, if it takes us two, three months to get the word out really well, we could start it in March. It would be to our benefit to start it before everyone begins their cleanup in this way.
Sure, but the one at Leaf Ford, can you tell us a little bit about that?
Yeah, a gentleman called me, he said, "I've got some brush I've cut, and I'm putting it out front of the house, he says, 'It's quite a bit, I need you to move it, because I have more that I've cut in the backyard.'" So, I go out there, he's owning a Bobcat himself, getting it, stacking it, rolling it up in a huge pile. Again, you know, our policy has been, if it's cut by the homeowner, we'll do our best to help them. And of course, then later, we hear, we get it cleaned up, neighbor comes over, "Why did y'all do that? I'm mad, because I had to pay to get fined, and the contractor did, and that was contractor." I mean, what am I supposed to do, look at the man, go, "Nah, him's a liar?", I don't know.
After we received the information at the last council meeting on that one, there were several neighbors asked me about why we did it, because it was done by commercial.
And I mean, the gentleman's there on the back, on the Bobcat himself, he called me a day ahead of time, I don't know if I'd handle.
Is he kind of followed proper procedure? Kinda sorta.
Kinda sorta, yeah.
Alerted you.
But if you put the limit on it, is sort of my point. Is the man going to cut that much, even if he did it, or whoever did it? Or is he gonna let that land in his yard for, if ever seven days, "I'm only gonna pick up this amount," then that's gonna lay in your yard for quite a while, bringing it out there a little bit at a time.
Which presents problems for us. It's, I mean, still presents, on the other side of that, the rubbish just laying out there, limbs, trees.
Well, I mean, if I'm the homeowner, I wouldn't want it laying out there, I wouldn't do it.
I know, I know. But we're gonna hear that if it lays out there for weeks and weeks on time from other neighbors.
And really, that is, we make it around town, we try to make it around town every seven days. Now, when you, again, you have to send, and we send extra crews out. Like I say, this one pile that I sent the picture around, that's going to take at least five men. You have to have flagmen out there because of where it's located, there's two men. You, like, we try to put an extra man on chopper or something like this, and we get it done a little quicker, so there's three men. There's almost seventy dollars an hour, not counting equipment. And probably a few hours gone, that they could have been gone somewhere else to another resident.
Until we maybe establish new guidelines, let me ask you a question. Until we establish those new guidelines that we might implement, can, and we see a job like, say, Example Leaf Ford, can we do, be more diligent in asking neighbors?
I can, that's the right title.
I'm just asking.
I can, but I will back out between them when I do.
I guess his point is, you've got the homeowner telling you, "I didn't," he was a contractor, and then you have a neighbor saying they did, and which resident do you believe?
But you have that quite frequently happening, you just mentioned another one at Hackberry.
And most of them, you know, on weekends, they say, "No, we're not out, we're not out," and they come to see them, and yeah.
And I don't know what the county is charging now, but I feel like some of the brush is not even being cut on site. Some brush is being brought in on trade.
All the time you get there, the trailer's gone, the brush is there.
So, will be on the agenda, and in your packet, I'll put another one of these, and I'd like for you to take an opportunity to read over it closely, if you think of something that needs to be added or deleted, because that's what we'll be asking for a vote on. What we'll try to get before next week, and I'm gonna be at the National League of Cities the rest of the week, but Steve and I'll figure out a way to do this, to see if we can get a plan out for a timeline on getting it out to the public. Because when you vote, we'll be asking, "When do you want this to go into effect?" So, we need to know if we're gonna be able to do it that way, you know, when Mr. Wolf can get it on there, and when we can get it in the paper, and it's gonna take a little time to make, and just preaching it over and over and over, so.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Do y'all do the same thing for commercial lawn carries that harvest the leaves, you know, if they dump them aside of the road?
Yeah, we've asked that the grass clippings be bagged, because I mean...
I was just wondering if you had, you're saying we want to commercial...
Unless you're standing there watching them, you don't know who's doing it, I mean, you...
You know what I'm saying, if you have commercial people that should really be thoughtful.
And usually, if you have somebody that's just doing no more than a resident would do, if they're out there just trimming some lower branches or something, it's not a big deal. But when they come here and start removing brush, you know, everything, and that's when you get a problem.
When we go through this exercise, would it be a good opportunity to also point out other types of debris that we're not responsible for?
Oh, yes, we have that on our website, we also have the requests that we put out this year, that all grass clippings and hedge clippings be bagged, otherwise, that's another, you end up out there, you can't pour grass clippings, you know, you have to have a backhoe, put them in the backhoe, put them in the truck. So, again, you're back with equipment and man, simple thing.
I was thinking more in terms of someone that's replacing carpet, and they throw their carpet out next to, you know, construction materials and...
We can definitely add that.
And while we're putting this word out, we need to put as much out as we can.
And we recently just updated all that on the website, so it's just a matter of printing that off and adding it to the letter. So, we can work on that and possibly even have a letter devised for them to maybe look at. It's questionable if we get that out by Friday, because I'm not gonna be here, but if Steve can get it together, he can give it to Judy to send out in the packets. I guess, the next thing, I wanted to introduce, Kristy, stand up just a second. This is Kristy Faulkner, she is our new human resource manager, and we are really, really excited to have her. This is her second week, so I want to thank the council for giving us the opportunity to get her. She's already found things that we can improve on and got us a plan, so we're ready to go. And I, you don't have to stay if you don't want to, but you're welcome to. I just wanted to introduce you.
Thank you.
Let's see, I suppose, I can do this one rather quickly. This is a TDOT Intermodal Access Grant, and you may not be familiar, but we are part of a regional planning for TDOT. It's basically the surrounding counties, I think Bedford's in, Lincoln's in it, us...
Southeast Regional Planning, I would say.
And if we wanted to apply for something like this, we would have to present it at the regional, Southeast Regional Planning, and they would decide which project they would sponsor. Doesn't mean that you'll get it, but you have to be selected in your region to even go in for it at the state level. We applied for this several years ago, actually, when Tom Orr was here, because he used to be the chairman of that organization, so we had him represent, represent us, which, we did lose out to Lincoln County, that's rather a long story that I won't go into, but what we put in for was sidewalks on the south end of town, going from like the square towards Franklin County Paint, that area, because it's not very pedestrian friendly, and we do have quite a few people that walk in that area. And we also have New Life down there, I think you'll see some of their clients walking. This is a, it can be up to a million dollar grant, it's ninety-five, five, which you do not get an opportunity to get often. If we applied, it would be several years down the road before we'd ever get to the point where we could actually do it. But I didn't even want to go to the effort of reapplying for that if the match money, you know, three years down the road might be an issue. So, that's why I'm bringing it to you, to kind of see what your feeling is on that. I did ask, because my first thought was Dry Creek, because it has to be, you're limited on where you can spend the money, you have to spend it on a state route or within a quarter mile of that state route. So, doing any kind of trails or anything at Dry Creek might be questionable, because we're getting really close to the quarter mile once you go back there.
May I say something?
Yes.
I don't know if you saw the message I sent back to you yesterday or not.
I did.
Okay. I would like to push the Dry Creek, not Dry Creek itself, but the project on Lynchburg Highway, from the three-way stop at Cedar Street, at least the quarter mile or so where we can get towards Duncan Lane. And the reason for that is, when this new connector road is built, that is gonna become our road. And we have some very bad problems on there right now, it's a very unsafe road with open ditches. I don't know if you remember, there, years ago, they asked the state to do us a study to see about widening that road, it came back and it outraged a six, eight million dollar project affecting homes. You can do this a lot simpler, if you can use this kind of money to go in there, pipe that ditch, put in the correct drainage, put your correct sidewalk in there. Then, when we get it, we have something that we're not gonna have to spend our money on later down the line. So, I would really like to sort of be an advocate for that, that project. And it would also tie into Dry Creek Beach, it would be a phase, then you could take that phase on to Dry Creek, because there would probably be a lot of people, when this Marina and stuff is done, you know, walking that way.
I had sent an email to Steve yesterday morning about this grant, saying that, you know, we submitted for the south end of town, but I wasn't really feeling like that was where our need was the greatest, because it would apply, you know, north high going to the parks, some other things, but obviously, if you prioritize it, the Lynchburg Road is the most in need. And the only way to widen it is to pop the existing, what's there now. Money can be spent for acquisition, but I don't think, we're not interested in acquisition, we're just interested mainly in piping those ditches and replacing sidewalk, which would give you a shoulder, which you have none now. And like I said, I feel like it would be two to three years down the road, but I know we said we were kind of gonna back off of grants for a little while to try to catch on.
Is that a ninety-five, five?
Mm-hmm. You just don't get that opportunity. And if we presented it and we weren't selected from the regional, because, you know, we sometimes have some pretty tough competition there, and it's a, it's a matter of securing your votes at that level, we would already have some preliminary work done, and we could resubmit next year, because it's generally the same people that put in for that pot of money.
Another thing, speaking of that, I've been on the Regional Planning Organization for years. I believe Mark Dudley has retired, has he not? He was our other member, so we do need another member, we do need to have a full, because that's where your votes come from.
Yeah, I put myself on there a couple of months ago, and then Johnny Woodall, I will talk to him about that other, because it is important that you have all your members. Zachary, do you still serve on it, because I had to add, I think you wrote off?
No, I've, I've...
You were the one that I recommended. I recommended Zachary, because the airport gives us so much TDOT money also, that I thought he would be a good fit for it, so I may double check on that. But, you know, I want y'all to think about that. We have till January, I think it says January fifteenth, so I just want, you know, for y'all to fill it out and see, we would need to start working on it, get a little bit of engineering and some things done pretty quickly in order to be able to submit it, especially if we didn't just resubmit what we submitted last time. And I do agree with Steve, I do think that Lynchburg Highway, whether we get a grant, eventually, we're gonna have to do something. And with a connector road coming in, he assures me that that's gonna become ours.
Well, in light of that, why wouldn't we do it? I mean, in the end, it'll just save us a lot of money.
Actually, as far as TDOT's concerned, I think they would look favorably on us trying to improve that road, because they know that we would try to fight them on taking it over, even though we would lose.
And we're looking at spending money, and on the other end, because of the Dry Creek project, and we're gonna have to turn lanes in, we know that already, so we could just add these sidewalks, you know, to that project, coming back the other way to tie in where we end.
So, I will put that on the agenda as well, and we can vote yea or nay, whether, and that will give us enough time to start, start the process. Next, we have Abby here, and she has a couple of things that she wants to go over. I'm gonna hand out a proposal from...
I have the same thing.
Oh, you do, okay.
I think that's all right.
Audio/video experience out of Brentwood, Tennessee.
And I have extra case.
Everybody has one?
Oh, not down here, it's not.
They're not in Florida.
With the feedback I've heard from the Winchester Downtown Board and the Downtown residents, and even the community, one of the projects we'd like to pursue is putting an outdoor speaker system in downtown Winchester. It could be used, it'll be used if we're able to, to play music via the internet, internet radio during Christmas, all throughout the year. We can use it as a PA system to make announcements during, you know, if there was bad weather, during festivals, to make various announcements of what's happening, or to talk about sponsors, who the sponsors are. We've ran, as we've spoken about it more and more, we ran into a lot of opportunities that we could use to speakers. So, after doing research and finding this company and meeting with the gentleman with this company several times, we then took it to the Winchester Downtown Board to ask to move forward with it, and their proposal was to move forward and present it to the Winchester City Council to see if we could split the cost in half, the Downtown Board paying half, and the city of Winchester paying half. So, in front of you is the proposal with sixteen speakers, and these, and Beth and Steve can probably help me a little bit on this, as far as the engineering part of it, they're hardwired speakers and wireless, or is it just?
Just hardwired.
They originally, we originally asked for wireless, so there would be no wires anywhere downtown, and when they did, they came and did a test of the area, because we have so many radio frequencies because of the tower, there was a lot of interference, so what happens when you're playing that type of music, it'll play, and then all of a sudden, you'll have thirty, forty-five seconds where it's buffering. You've had that happen on your computer before, where your internet was slow or something. So, they suggested, the only way that they felt comfortable in doing it was to hardwire it. And I immediately said, "We spent all this money getting all the wires underground, we don't want any wires anywhere, because they would have to go from road, you know, from one side of the road to the other side." But then, we remembered that when we did these projects, that we put extra conduit under the sidewalks when we did it, for things like this. And the gentleman that came asked about our light, because I said, "Could we put the wireless, or the speakers on our light post?", because that would be about where we would need them. And we found out that our light posts actually have a place in the bottom for something to go in, and he asked how our lights were wired together. And they are on circuits of four, I think?
Yes, four circuits, with two separate conduit back to... Yes, four circuits with two separate conduit back to the control box on this courthouse side of the square. We sent him the schematics for what we did. I haven't heard back from him on that.
I haven't either. And we, I guess, you know, after we can, next week we can get back with him. But we do feel like that having the hardwired ones will, he says we should have a hundred percent. We shouldn't have any trouble whatsoever where we would if we went with the wireless. So I think it would be a good benefit to downtown. I think my mistake is I presented it to the Downtown Board. Abby should have presented it to the Downtown Board. But it was suggested that since after the grant is over, they will belong to the city per the pilot grant. That we make half of an investment in it, which what you have in front of you, I think twenty-three thousand seventy dollars and ninety-four cents. That included fourteen hundred in tax, of course, that we wouldn't pay. So you're looking at eleven thousand dollars. And M C, I asked M C, and I haven't spoke with her, she was on vacation last week. But I had asked M C, because I think it would make a big difference to the council whether it would have to be a budget amendment. Or if it's something that we could work in, and it's probably going to have to be a budget amendment.
At this time, this early in the budget, that's the only way I would really feel comfortable doing it. We've still got several months left in the year to see, as this was. And it would be a fixed asset, so it would need to come before the council. And it would still have to be an amendment, whether it came out of the current funding or not.
Because it's not something that we had budgeted when we.
It'd be capital outlay.
Right, it would be a capital outlay. Anything over ten thousand dollars, well, anything over five that's a capital outlay. This has to be approved anyway, so it would be better to go ahead and do an amendment at that time.
So, okay, if it's okay with everyone, that will be on the agenda as well for a, a vote on that one.
And if you have any more questions in the meantime, feel free to give me a call or email me. I can go into more depth that way if you would like.
How many speakers you said?
Sixteen.
Sixteen, okay. And that's adequate?
Yes.
For the town?
Yes.
Or the streets by a break?
Another, I just wanted, you didn't mention this. One really nice quality of this is the way we configured it would be two speakers on each side of the four. And then two on each side of this street because there's retail here as well. You can also add on to this system. So you're not topped out as the downtown grows in the future. But you can, say on the west side of the square, you want to announce something just to that area. So you can single out those two speakers and only amount, make that announcement to that area. So you can speak to different areas, which is pretty neat. I can see that benefiting, especially when we have events. Merchants, you know, if they're having a sale, they're doing something special on their side of the square. They could, we could program something to go in there. Abby has one other thing we've discussed about before. She just kind of wanted to know if she needed to let it go or bring it back. And it was about permitting for alcohol. We currently have a restriction for, you can just have one special event alcohol permit per year. And that has presented a little bit of a problem in the downtown area. Because they have one big event, which is Farm to Table, which is very successful. And that limits them on other events. So she wanted to discuss to see if the council would consider expanding that.
And to talk about it a little bit more in depth. Right now, we have the wriggle, which doesn't really require any kind of permits. Taste of Autumn. We're looking at kind of changing some things up. We did a survey to the merchants after this Taste of Autumn. And we got an overwhelming response to move it to the evening. So we're considering that as an option. And I know that we had previously applied for a beer permit before I understood that we could only have one per year. At an odd time, which I didn't agree with, just as you all had talked about at ten in the morning. So hopefully that would help that situation by having it at a later date, a later time. But we, we also asked about having a beer garden, how the merchants felt about that. And there was a response that they would like to see a beer type garden and during that event. And then we have our Christmas event that we're planning, which I don't think we would need probably a beer permit for. But we could, I mean, we could eventually, you know, get to if we wanted to. But I don't think every event needs to have alcohol. That's not what I'm proposing at all. But, you know, I think we want to try to move forward to do some more things in the summertime. Like a Live After Five every month, once a month, and do maybe some music and some things like that. And I think having maybe some options to sell beer during these events could be beneficial in getting more people to come downtown. We could use it as a fundraising option. I just see a lot of benefits to that. And in speaking with other Main Street communities, they do that. And I've asked the question a lot, if they see that it brings more people or if they have problems. And it's been an overwhelmingly positive response across the state. And, you know, I think if it's handled correctly and the times aren't, you know, late. I think that it could be a benefit to downtown to be able to do that more. So that's what I would like to ask, is to see if it's an option to be able to acquire a beer permit for special events more than once a year.
Those can still have to come before the council each, each event. So we would still have an opportunity to review the circumstances for each one.
So one, we didn't know how the council felt about that. And if you were in favor of it, do you have a kind of an idea of, because I'm sure you would want to put some kind of limit. You wouldn't just want it necessarily to be open ended. But as the mayor said, all permits have to come in front of the council for approval, so.
If you have to approve each one. See where, why you would need to put a limit, because you've proven them one at a time. I guess you could put a limit, but I mean, I'm just thinking. If you don't want anymore, you don't approve anymore.
Well, if, if the event in the evening, the Friday afternoon or whatever you may reference to. If that were real successful and brought people to town for the right reasons. If you, if you did that once a month, I mean, you'd have, could end up having twelve of those. So, I mean, I, I agree with what Jean says. I mean, we have an opportunity to, to either pass it or not pass it. I don't know if a limit's going to be, you know, an answer. I mean, I could see that creating a situation where we felt like that we might want to have more than what the limit is and then having to deal with the limit.
Right.
So, I mean, it's still, the council still is in control.
Correct.
Well, I will write it up before I leave tomorrow, just to eliminate, eliminate that one clause where it says one per year. And, and Abby speaks on behalf of downtown. But one, once this is changed, it changes it for everyone. You know, any nonprofit or something that wanted to ask for that. They have to come in front of the council. So I didn't want you to think it was just a downtown. By changing it would just affect downtown. It may, right now, we don't really have any others that apply for it, but they, they do have the opportunity to apply for it. There's also some permitting that has to happen at the state level. When you serve alcohol, you have to have an A B C permit. I think it's two hundred and fifty dollars.
Is that for the wine?
Yeah, and, and that deters a lot of people. Because time you, oh, your permitting gets pretty expensive. But I do, we have seen it be successful in the downtown areas, is what we're asking. So I will put that on the agenda. Now, we have another item she wanted to discuss that we're not going to be, was not my plan to necessarily put on the agenda. But we had sent out several months ago about having a certain area in the town. Whether it be one street or two streets, one block area. Where during special events, alcohol could be on the sidewalk, which we do not allow at the time, right now. And we, you know, we've sent it out, I think I've sent it out twice and I just, you know, I haven't heard anything. So I think Abby wanted to talk about the benefits of that. And to see if we need to pursue that or if we just need to not pursue it any further, so.
And where, where this came from is Jonesboro, Tennessee. They, that's where we kind of modeled our Farm to Table Dinner from. And they have the dinner in the street. And they, what I, what we sent out, the, I guess it was, I don't know if you call it ordinance or a special event type permit. Is what they use to have the alcohol in the street during the Farm to Table. So what it would basically do is just allow, and the way we would envision it happening is not the whole square. North Jefferson Street and North College Street and possibly the alley in between. I don't know if that's city owned. Who does? That area, I think, could be very easy to have these events. I'm talking about the Live After Five or even, you know, maybe Taste of Autumn instead of closing the whole square. You know, you could have easily close these side streets. And if we were able to say have a beer garden for the Live After Five. It would allow just those areas to be blocked off and people couldn't not have to stay on a parking lot. Because right now, we were thinking about, you know, using somebody's private parking lot to have the enclosed beer garden. And, you know, that would work out fine, but I could see, you know, if the event is successful, if you could do it on the whole street. It could, it'd be a lot easier to enjoy the music, the whatever other entertainment might be there. If we get, you know, downtown restaurants to have food vending areas or even if we're able to bring in fruit trucks. I could just see that it could be beneficial. And then like Farm to Table, you could have it in the street, which was our ultimate goal, was to have it down the street. So that's just something that I've been thinking about and trying to present in the right way.
And it's not something that we're prepared to put on the agenda this month. But we, you know, we didn't want to waste time, her time, going forth with it and trying to model an ordinance. Because it would have to be in ordinance form. If, you know, we weren't interested in going that direction, so. That's why we're bringing it up in a work session to kind of see what, you know, everybody's opinion is.
If, going back to what we just previously discussed about the permit. Can that not be a part of the permitting process? To have it at X location and, and let the council approve that location each time instead of having designated an area?
I, I think it would be possible that way. I have to do a little research. Because right now, the special event is, is not in any ordinance form. It is just a rule that everyone has to, you know, a hoop they have to jump through. So we could implement that. And what that would mean is that those areas, wherever they are, would not be available to do that at all times. It would mean only a special event that had been approved by the council prior. So basically, you would be given an exception for that one event. If Farm to Table wanted to be in the street on Jefferson Street, we would have to, when we give, approved it. We would have to approve for it to be in the street. And currently, we've not been able to have it on city property. We've actually had to put it on private property because there was one unserved. And that would allow it to be, Farm to Table originally, especially in Jonesboro. What made it so awesome was the fact that it was, you know, a one block street was closed and it was in the middle of the street. And just one long table. Yes.
And what prevented us from having it on the street?
Because we have awareness against having alcohol on, on city property. So, but if we included it in our rules for alcohol. I suppose, I, I, like I said, I would want to get some information for M T S to make sure that we could do that. We could allow an exception.
When we did it on North College, it was actually served on private property.
Yes.
Yeah, I remember that, yeah. Well, you might check on that and just see.
Okay, I will work with M T S and see if we can somewhat combine the two together to see if that might be an easier way. And I think the last thing that I wanted to discuss is, there is a piece of property. And I did not make copies for everyone, and Bruce, you may have to help me with this one. I had a gentleman, Mr. Byram, come to see me. He also came last year. He purchased some investment property several years ago on Laura Avenue. And he thought he was purchasing four lots, one with a home on it. Last year, when he got his tax card, he realized that he only had three tax cards and not four. So he started doing research and come to find out that fourth lot is in the city of Winchester's name. It also does not have road frontage. And if you're familiar with Mr. Jim Hills, I think you said he sold that. But his, his, his place, and he's got cars behind, and I'll pass this picture around. And the square that you can see is the one. The, the two lots that are outlined are city of Winchester. The one he is interested is the square one and these other three are his.
Excuse me, Beth, the, the other, the other one, the second one, is also on the same deed. So it, it would have normally been included in that purchase.
This one right here?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's, it, that's all on the same portion.
So both of them are listed in the city of Winchester. We're not exactly sure how it got in the city's name. We've tried to do some research and Bruce's office has tried to help us. We did find out that when Mr. Byram purchased it, the deed before it had four tracks. And his deed only had three. And then there was a quitclaim deed from the former owners to take care of the fourth lot. But the people that did the quitclaim deed on the fourth lot didn't own it to start with. So you can't quitclaim something you don't own. So the gentleman, you know, we do have a, a rule that you have to have road frontage to have a lot. And this particular, these particular lots do not have road frontage. So the only person that really, in my opinion, it, it should have somewhat went with that property. Because no one else can purchase it really because there's no road frontage. He's interested in getting it, seeing if the city will give it to him, let him purchase it, what, you know. So we have to sell property. We cannot give property away. The question is, do we want to dispose of the property that we didn't know we actually owned until recently? And how do we want to dispose of it? The last property that we sold, we actually sold on govdeals.com. Other than that, we have to sell it, excuse me, sell it at sealed bids. I, I don't know of anyone else that would be interested in it, but we do have to do it at a public forum. So one, are we willing to dispose of the property? And two, I'll need a motion at the council meeting of if, if we voted to dispose of it, how would we dispose of it? So, and you're welcome. I could, we'll get a colored copy of this map and send it out with y'all's packets on Friday. And you may want to drive by and just, it's, it's much easier if you're visually looking. He owns the home in between the two pieces of property. And it's a rental property for him. He is actually out of Tallahoma or Manchester. Tallahoma.
Who, who'd been paying taxes on?
Nobody.
No one.
No one.
But we didn't know we had it.
No.
We didn't know we don't.
You know, I would recommend that we dispose of it to get it back on the tax roads. I really don't have a preference as to how. really don't have a preference as to how we dispose of it. I just need to make sure we do it in one of those two forms, so that we're legal.
The big problem is if someone comes other than him to buy it, they have no access to it.
See, we really, that's another thing. And, you know, the gentleman offered me $500 for a spot, and he said, let me write you a check today. And I told him I couldn't take it, you know, and I couldn't, because, you know, we, I had to have council approval to actually dispose.
Jason, if we offered it to the public for sale, and somebody else bought it, can they not force us to, you know, force some property owner to put a lien, to put a right of way?
But we would have to sell it as a non-buildable lot. We'd have, we would have to advertise it as a non-buildable. And the only other person that I'm aware of that might see some value in it...
Easy, is what I was trying to think of.
Is one of the other homeowners that their property might touch it. There might be some value to them, but...
What'd you say?
One of the homeowners that might, their property might, property lines adjoint it. It might be possible. Most of those homes are rental properties.
In, in this case, half of your property, I mean, this property is actually divided by Mr. Byram's property. It's not, they're not together. But it's the same, it's the same deed of property, the same portion of it.
Well, I think we need to dispose of it. But I think that we need to dispose of it in a, the correct way, you know, from a public forum. Even though, you know, he probably deserves that himself, but he'll have an opportunity to buy it in, in the same public forum as, as a neighbor would.
He probably could advertise it and have a sale with the, you in a chamber of council room and sell it.
Yes, I could advertise it and take sealed bids, and highest bidder wins. Actually, you'd probably get more money that way, because you can actually see other bids on govdeals.com.
If you advertise it as a non-buildable lot, I mean, that's gonna not...
Yeah.
I mean, the only value is theirs to the, to the neighbors.
Two people.
Yeah.
We had a guesswork.
But that, that will be on your agenda as well. And as I said, we'll make colored copies and send you out copies of the deeds and everything, so you can look at it. And that will need two motions, one to dispose of it, or put both in one motion, and how to dispose of it. So you can be thinking about that.
Do we have any reason to think that there are, that there could be any other property out there that we own, that we don't know about?
Yeah.
Well, how, I mean, how, how do we...
Is there a way to hit a button that says, "Chester owns all this property, and let us go inventory"? Because we know we have quite a bit. We, we get it through tax sales.
Yeah.
Yeah, we found out several years ago about some alleys.
Yeah.
Yes.
So we need to be aware of what we own.
That, that's something I was, been meaning to give Council Spencer about, but I haven't made it. It's what we call, in my end of this, the paper right of way. It was a plat that was platted 1920. And on that plat, they had roadways. Okay? The roadways were never built, so they were never accepted by the city. And you only accept them after they're built to your standards. So what has happened over the years, here you have the lots, you have this, if you seal them theirs, 50 or 30-foot strip, I guess it's no man's land, basically, because those plaits were recorded, but never built. And you have that all over town.
Well, to go back to the question, is there a way to push a button and make that determination?
I don't know if there's one single button. We could sort of...
I, I know within our tax program that we can type in someone's last name, and it'll pull up all the properties.
And that name.
With people that have that last name.
If you spell it exactly correct.
Yes.
Or misspell it exactly.
The bigger issue, the bigger issue on City of Winchester property, because we can even type it in, and it, it possibly would show us. The, the bigger issue for us is, City of Winchester, years ago, much of it is utility property, but it's listed under City of Winchester, or vice versa. And really needs to be separated.
We may need to...
And maybe that could be a goal. I could try to push that button and get that list, and try to determine if there's some out there that we were not aware of, and two, are there some that need to be changed over, similar to the airport. We have, we, that's how we became aware that we had some issues with leases, because the leases had to be, some had to be with City of Winchester, some had to be with the airport, because the name on that particular property. So...
Well, I, I don't think it's something that we need to try to discover in the next 30 days.
Right.
But I think it's something that, over the course of time, months, that we need to be working on and try to. I mean, there may be others out there that we have an opportunity to...
I'm almost afraid to look.
To sell. Are those plaits you're talking about, since they were never actually accepted by the city, will they show up in the city's names?
Oh, actually, it shows up in no one's name.
I was gonna say, see, that's the thing, is I don't know how much on, on our software actually shows up city. I'm wondering if the county won't show more than we do.
When I send you this colored copy, and I actually could get Lisa to just go make some, in between Mr. Hill's old property and back here, it looks like a roadway. And when this particular subdivision, many, many, many years ago, came through the city, that road was proposed, but never happened. So when you put your little arrow on that road to say, who is the owner of that property, no one. So this whole big strip down through here, and you can tell by, when you look at an overhead aerial shot of, of that particular neighborhood, you can tell it was designed to have one more row, and that's where these lots came from, and it never occurred. They just stopped.
It's not the railroad bed, is it?
No, no. You can see the old road. It, it borders the old railroad.
I knew it was in there somewhere. But this is probably not unique to just Winchester. I mean, it could happen in each of the municipalities within the county.
I'm sure there's, there's several issues, but I will make a point to, to try to study that for next year, put that on our to-do list. I don't have anything else that I was planning on putting on the agenda, and actually, we'll be cutting the agenda off early, since I'm not gonna be here. But I wanted to give you an update on Farf Circle, because we discussed that, I think, at our last one. And Steve said that he's talked with Cory, our engineer, but they have been so swamped with all the other projects that we're working on, that they haven't had the opportunity. But it is on their to-do list.
We're trying, we have five projects this fiscal year that are budgeted, that we need to get going.
So we can get them done this fiscal year.
As I told you before, I did tell the homeowners association that it had not been budgeted this year, but we look at next year. So we'd like to get the project we have ready to go going first.
So the city is going to undertake the project?
I'm not saying that. That's gonna be y'all's choice. We're gonna give you a...
No, all we're doing is looking at the effects.
We're gonna give you the report, hopefully a contest along with it.
Basically, what we are saying is, the five projects that the city has obligated theirself to this year, we need to get those done and off the books before June 30th, so they take priority to that one. That's basically what he's saying. So. So does anyone have anything else? Dennis is gonna ask to dispose of a vehicle. Dennis is in here, so I'm not... No, that's a small technical thing.
I'll do my, send my financials out on Friday.
Got a question?
Yeah.
I have been also reapproached by the EAA to find out what the status of their lease renewal is. I told them that I wasn't sure. I'd check with you guys, but I'm kinda like them. I'd like to see something happen with...
Actually, we said that y'all need to take care of it.
Okay, and we can. I just, I think we probably...
I'm sorry if there was a missed word.
Yeah, we, we probably need to, I, I don't know if we need to get something from Greg or not, that says to do that. I don't know.
If you'll hang around after the meeting, we'll make a phone call, because I need to get it done today.
Okay.
But, and I had told them the same thing. I said, you know, turn it over to the airport.
I, I...
The airport's gonna work on it. We wanna see it, but...
Yeah. I, I had kinda mentioned that to them about two months ago, that that's probably the direction it was gonna take, but that I was just kinda waiting to hear back, and I just, I wasn't sure, so.
Okay. Just let them know, because I'm not sure exactly where the communication era was.
I'll call John, call in and carry. So I'll let them know.
And we'll, we'll call over to Greg in just a few minutes. Does anybody have anything else? Okay, thank y'all. Wow, one hour, we did great.
Medtrans ground breaking tomorrow. I'm Adam.
Oh, yes, yes. Please, we need as many people as we can to be there.
I'm, I'm pretty sure that the CEO for Medtrans is flying in for it, so it's a big ordeal for them. We've invited several people around the county.
Can we get a helicopter ride?
I don't know if they're gonna be doing rides around tomorrow, but they did it the day they opened up, so.
We could run over you with a car and get you one.
Yeah.